I'm stepping down.
Yes, good evening. As part of the reorganization of the school committee for this meeting, I'm calling the meeting to order. Do notice having been posted at 6:30 here at Pinequan High School. Rule call. Gene Fox.
Yes.
Carolyn Gomes.
Here.
Sherri Baron.
Here.
Robert Clark.
Yep.
Derek Roshan.
Here.
Steve Owen.
Here.
Laura Ramsden.
Here.
Will Sankwitz.
Here.
Also present, myself, Mr. Baker, our new director of finance, July 1, Ashley Lopes, Marlene Correa, Renee Reddick, Ellen Harrington, unfortunately had a personal commitment and sadly will be here tonight. So I'd ask, let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance before we start. Oh, right here, gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, interior republic, which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible,天地，公道， and just as for all.
I deduct it to ask if anyone is recording the meeting other than Lake Cam and Elphus Dean Banks. Thank you. So the first order of business is reorganization of the school committee. First order, Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I would, I would like to make a motion that everything stay the same as far as the subcommittees and the, and only change the chair and the vice chair and have them switch. So Carolyn Gomes will become chair and Gene will be vice chair and everyone else would stay on the same committees. If that passes and then someone wants to resign from a committee, they can do that. That's my, that's my motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, discussion? In the absence of, oh.
He resigned. There's a sidebar going on.
Any discussion, no? In the absence of discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? So we have a new chair and that flip, just for those in the audience, is a flip back to previous where we rotate between Lakeville and Freetown. And so now the chair for the 2018-19 school year and the remainder of this year is Carolyn Gomes. We typically at this point turn over the meeting to the chair. From that point on, before I do that Carolyn, I just want to make note to the committee that there is one new subcommittee on the bottom. Doesn't have to be addressed right now, but for purposes of the motion and everybody agreed, all those other committees have current representatives, short of someone stepping down. We would just need a representative for that committee. It's a district wellness and health committee at some point to discuss that Carolyn at a later time. Doesn't have to be decided tonight, but if there is interest.
Does everybody want to get it out of the way now?
Yep.
Take two minutes and that way it's done.
Yep.
And we'll go from there. Can I just ask one question? Were all of the elected, was everybody sworn in that was on the ballot?
Yes.
Okay. And a write-in? Thank you. Okay, perfect. Okay. Do I have any volunteers for the wellness?
I don't know who to nominate. Sherri.
I second that.
Congratulations.
Is that a volunteer?
You don't get the volunteers, you got nominated. It's fine.
Are you okay with that?
That's fine.
Okay. Is there anybody else?
I have too many committees.
Okay. Just one? I will.
It's a committee that only meets four times a year, but it does require a school committee representative. I don't think it requires an alternate.
So a single one is enough?
Yeah.
I will, I will do my very best to be at those meetings with you. Okay? Is that fair?
I think it meets during the school day, is that correct?
It typically is in the afternoon, like a three o'clock meeting.
Okay. I'll try my best.
Thank you.
Okay. Public participation.
You can breathe now, Bob. Could I just acknowledge that we have some Boy Scouts here? And I can't remember who was attending. If you could just stand up. And we're very happy that you're here. I was supposed to meet with you and then we had the third hundred-year storm in three weeks and it didn't happen, but.
This is a small group from the troop 64 in East Freetown and they're working on their citizenship and their community badge, so they have to attend a meeting of local government. So we're happy that we could attend the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Oh.
We're very happy that you're here.
Thank you.
And you don't have to stay throughout the entire thing, but you'll get, you'll get a flavor for it, okay?
We wish we could, we could have made it a little bit more interesting for the younger generation. I apologize. Okay. Anybody for public participation? Going one? Going twice? Okay. Acceptance of minutes? I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of March 26.
So move.
Second.
Put the motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, others in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? House is unanimous?
Settle, settle.
Okay. And the executive session minutes?
Motion to approve and continue under lock and key till all the process is complete.
Perfect. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, others in favor signify.
Hold on one second. I, it should be noted that I was absent at that meeting. I think we should be noting that in the executive session meetings, particularly where.
Oh, the actual meeting.
Yes, the actual meeting.
That's not the roll call in here, but yeah.
When you look at this, it may be assumed that I'm in that meeting and I don't want that to be the case. Should we go back?
Yeah, so, no, he is in here as a roll call, which we have to do going into executive session, but it should be noted in the actual body of the minutes that he is not in fact attending the meeting.
Should we go back and amend previous meeting?
Yes. We should probably make a note of that in all.
I wanted to say I had done it previously, but I don't know why, but I would definitely check.
Okay.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, others in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions?
Abstentions, correct.
Okay.
You do not have our.
Okay.
No, we don't.
Move right along to old business. Class size.
You know, before that we have, my principals and leadership team would be fine with that, with that oversight.
Sorry, skipped right over to five.
I see a couple of them putting on their jackets right now. No, no.
They're heading for the door.
Dave, come back.
We do have some school.
Improvement plans.
So as part, really the request of the committee last year was to, not only to have a school improvement plan presented, but also kind of a mid-year or springtime update. I've asked each of the schools, so we have all five schools represented tonight. Mr. Petota's gonna kick off the piece. Just for informational purposes, we do have some community members here. Mr. Petota's the middle school principal. We have from the intermediate school, Dr. Sullivan, Elizabeth Sullivan. From the elementary schools, we have principal Mike Ward from FES and from Assawamsted, Bethany Penalt. And representing the high school tonight is our assistant, is Dr. Starkey's assistant principal, Kalen Dizert, second row. So they'll each be providing a brief update and certainly responsive to any questions that he might have. Mr. Petota?
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, I'm happy to say that I'm dedicating my presentation to the Boy Scouts of America this evening. Such wonderful kids. I've had an opportunity to work with many of them. They're just awesome, awesome kids. It's nice to see you. Three goals I'm gonna go over and I'm just gonna highlight a couple bulleted areas of each one. The first smart goal had to do with the social emotional learning unit that we gave to the sixth graders this year. It was awesome. The unit was absolutely awesome. It was a goal that we've already accomplished. We began it with an anonymous self-awareness survey and the survey was used just to identify learning goals within the unit. That went very, very well. And I gotta tell you, teaching the unit, that was the first time I was really teaching in front of kids in like 20 years. And it was like, oh my God, I had so much fun with it. And I think the kids learned a lot from it. It was really a collaboration of students and administrators and teachers and guidance people and it just was excellent. And the more I learned about social emotional learning, it's just so important for school. It's just so important. We just don't spend enough time on it. And I hope as long-term goals come up, that we can just keep this as a much stronger part of the curriculum for the students. It is just so important. It's something I talk about every day with the students when they come to my office. I know guidance talks about it consistently. And we have to take care of the social emotional needs of our students if we're gonna take care of the learning. I'm such a supporter of it. Our second goal had to do with MCAS goal, trying to go up 5% this year compared to last year. Two highlights I want to point out of, as we're striding to meet that goal. One is the teacher and learning alliance that Dr. Correa got set up for us, for the school. It's just been an incredibly great program to work with. They're working primarily with our ELA teachers. They've been coming in doing demonstration lessons, doing workshops for the ELA teachers. And it's gonna be for a three-year process or two-year?
At least two.
It's just been awesome and we hope, the goal is to have it trickle down to the other subject areas as well. So the presenters have been absolutely fabulous. I know the teachers are really buying into it and I've been in classrooms observing lessons that they've learned that they've given to the students. So it's really gonna pay off in the long run. It's really, really great. And the second thing I want to highlight is we cannot thank you enough for the additional Chromebook cot we got this year with the online MCAS as if we're in the throes of right now. They are so valuable and they are being used every day. Teachers are fighting to get them in their classrooms. It is so important to get the students in front of the Chromebooks and just help them prepare. We just can't thank you enough for that. It's really become a very important part of our school. Third goal had to do with the writing across the curriculum that we introduced. That's going pretty well. Students are completing formal pieces of writings in each subject area. I've met with all the content teachers during the second trimester and we just kinda reviewed the process, the, you know, the pros and cons of it, what's hitting with it, what's not. I think the most important thing was developing the school-wide rubrics that all the classrooms are using. So we're trying to create a common language and a common lens to see the writing and give students feedback. So that's been going pretty well. I'm gonna meet with the teachers again, review the student work. Teachers are meeting with each other and going over student work together and it's just, we hope to make it part of the school, but there'll certainly be some tweaking by the end of the year of exactly how we're gonna do it. But it's been really pretty effective and I'm very proud of the teachers for taking it on as well as they did.
Very good.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Does anybody have anything for Petota? Steve?
This is gonna be, I guess, across the board. In the initiative met, it seemed to be a common theme across all the five schools, identify areas where we perform significantly lower in the state. Can you share a little bit about that as far as what subject areas, what particular areas in that? And obviously I'm assuming there's a, a plan to try to address those particular areas there.
All right, Dave, well, you gotta let me think for a second. Well, below the state, I mean, I can't think of an area that we really were significantly below the state.
Any of the subgroups?
Subgroups we're always working with. That's always been a struggle for us.
The focus was probably, that's why writing was the focus because it may not significantly is probably a strong word, but we were below the state in, in some of the writing when you look at the analysis of the MCAS questions.
Okay.
So that's why the TLA and the writing across the curriculum has a focus.
And of course that trickles over to math as well. And that's why as we're getting towards, you know, budget season and the one support class I have for my students at school is the MCAS math support class. I have no other outside the realm. And that's extremely important to address the needs, especially of those special needs students or the underperforming students in the classroom. So with that time, I really hope I can protect that position. It's the only one I have left and it will address, continues to address those needs that Dr. Correa shared.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Rest of my leadership team ready for that question? I'm just acknowledging Mr. Petota was supposed to stop, so we're ready.
Evening.
Dr. Sullivan representing intermediate school.
So Steve, for, for the intermediate school, you know, we, of the five schools, we had what I think was the biggest struggle with the MCAS was definitely reading comprehension was a major area of concern for us as compared to other parts of the state. And our first and second goal speak to that. And also you'll, you'll see the things that I'm, that I'm highlighting in my goals, Dr. Correa's been heavily involved in meeting with me and the ELA department on several different occasions, leading, you know, focusing on that reading comprehension and all the work that we had to work on with the literacy frameworks and getting that used across the curriculum. So the first goal focused on providing the necessary skills and strategies to read fluently and construct meaning. I'm just cutting, cutting out from that. So you see the initiatives that we've, that we've met and those are, you know, lots of things are, when I was reading it over, I'm thinking meeting, meeting, meeting. Yes, we have an awful lot of meetings, but we're having really valuable and meaningful conversations during those meetings. Some of the things that I want to highlight that come out of those are with our data team meetings, what we've, what we've seen is that my staff while I was awake developed, my ELA staff developed their goals for their own evaluation. And their goal looked at all of the students and had the, I thought it was ambitious that they, that they included every student, that everyone would, would make a growth of at least one stay nine. And having spoken to my reading specialist who looks at all of the data very clearly, about 94% have already done that. So we're, we're really in a good place thinking that we're gonna get there for by the time we look at the, the spring data. But it doesn't exactly, if I had to be honest, we don't think that it exactly correlates our grade assessment with the MCAS as much as we would want it to. So I think we could be a little bit more, I don't wanna use the word rigorous, but I think we, we might want to amp that up a little bit if we stuck with the same type of goal next year. So while 94% have met, met one stay nine, we still need to, I think we can amp that up a little bit. So that, that was one point that I wanted to highlight. We are, we're, we're making strides to be there in all of our common planning time, the work that we do with Dr. Correa. She's come over. We've had multiple staff meetings where she's facilitated that with me to, I keep saying um and I'm not really an um person, I think I'm nervous, where she's facilitated the meeting so that we can get the, the frameworks organized, the literacy framework so that they match what we do at the middle school and we match the frameworks. So some things were a little bit different for the grades four and five than for the elementary levels. So we were able to do that and go through everything to look at a hundred minutes with the ELA teachers and make sure that all the components of the ELA frameworks are met. So that piece has been done. We've also spent a significant amount of time talking to the teachers, modeling, giving more direction on what it actually means to confer with students after reading. So when they're doing their independent reading, what sorts of questions should be asked. Dr. Correa and I met with the teachers as a group. We also did some walkthroughs with the ELA chair. We came back with some evidence that we saw. We discussed that, not in any kind of an evaluative way, but just discussed some of the really great things we saw and shared those things. So just sort of to give you an idea, when we're asking the, the children to talk about what they're reading, we're not asking them to give us a summary of the book. It's not a book talk. It's, did you encounter any problems when you were reading? What do you do when that happens? So that those strategies that we teach them can be global and help them with any book they're reading, not just that one book they were reading. So that, those were pretty powerful. Another, another piece that came out of goal number one and also two is we've spent a significant amount of time, again, Dr. Correa over in my building with me and either Ashley Boulay, who works under Ellen Harrington or with Ellen directly, to try to look at our students, our high need students and how they're performing and how our model is delivered at the, at the intermediate school. So right now I have on each grade level, three inclusion teams and I have two special educators on each team. So they can't be everywhere. So one of the things that we were, we've been able to get to, you know, after many, many sessions is we're thinking about, will the model work next year if I have one, I mean, two special education teams on each grade level with the two special education teachers on each grade level that we have instead of three because they were, they can't, can't get there. So one would be devoted to one team, one would be devoted to another team. So they would see that whole child all day in each class. And that looks like with the numbers that we're getting from the two elementary schools and the numbers that I have in fourth and I'll go in the fifth, it looks like that could work. And that's gonna solve what we think are a lot of issues as far as delivery of service to those high need students. The second goal was the one that was the, the over, over several years with Freetown Elementary and Assawamsted. And this was to show the two to 3% increase in performance in ELA math and science on the MCAS. So many of the same initiatives with the, with the reviewing the data with the team, with the ELA and math and science teams, with them looking at the data from that year. We also provided three years' worth of data for them to compare that, even though we are comparing different cohorts of kids. The common planning time that we, that is utilized so effectively, I believe in my building. But again, that, that piece that I just mentioned, meeting with Dr. Correa and with Ellen and talking about our high needs group that, that is so very important and how do we, what, what can we do to better address those children? And I think that having that special educator around more often might be, you know, something that's pretty significant that we're looking forward to having to next year. We were able to have our mock exam for MCAS, which was pretty significant and went, went off without a hitch. We have the day after the unexpected snowstorm, so I had to get two grades in at once and that went very well. I just did my memo piece for this week and what I did is highlighted how we're using Google Classroom at the intermediate school. So you'll see when you read that piece, how often the children are getting onto the Chromebooks and we're so grateful for all the, all the cots that we have. They actually, that it's a pretty contentious thing, our Google Chromebook calendar for the teachers to get a hold of them. So they're a real hot commodity and the children are on them all the time. So you'll see in that memo how often they're on them and how comfortable they are with the keyboarding and ready for the computer-based testing. The third goal was the one that I was really excited about, about my parent night and Steve was, was present for it. I tried to do a quick head count while I was presenting, but I also was able to count how many handouts I had left. So I, I calculated about 63 parents there, which I think was, was a good number. I was able to answer all of the questions. I think one of the significant ones that I said at the end was there's something that I missed, parents, is there something that you didn't know involved the traffic? How do you pick your child up? Which is really a, a pretty big issue. I mean, they, none of, none of the buildings, you know, I think make it easy. There were an awful lot of, awful lot of traffic. There's nothing you can do, so you have to follow that routine. So I was able to explain that routine, so I'll add that in to the next presentation. But one of the things that Dave and I had talked about is our second one that we'll have on May 17th was maybe it would be a better idea to have that one in the daytime so we can get a different demographic of parents that weren't able to make it in the evening. So on May 17th at 10:00 AM, Dave, is that what we decided on? 10:00 AM we'll be meeting at the middle school. Nine, okay, like, we like early. Nine o'clock at the middle school and we're hoping to grab a, a different demographic and answer all of those questions. But it went, I had it planned for an hour. It went for about an hour and 10 minutes. There were some very, very good questions at the end. I, I had a document prepared that I am going to share out to all of the fifth grade parents on the one call, so everybody has that. And I think that's where we are. That's, that's it. That's where I am. Any questions for me?
Anyone have anything to add, Steve?
Thank you. Okay, Steve?
How many Chromebooks?
I have five cots.
You have five?
Whoops.
Two on each grade and an extra.
And how many at effort?
Oh, I'm sorry, wait. No, I have, I have four. I have four, I'm sorry. I don't have five. Four. I'm taking one. You're not getting one back. Thank you.
And you said four, Fred.
Thank you.
Is it a coin flip, are we going stay in elementary trip or do you want to go to Kalen for the secondary? Kalen is representing the high school, also will be representing the high school tomorrow at the state house. Other team, seven.
Thank you very much for allowing me to represent the high school. I'm very excited about tomorrow for our commendation celebration at the state house. It will be of three administrators, the three curriculum leaders of the MCAS subjects and the guidance department head. And I thank the whole district for what they've done. It's because of all the support and the education that they have all the way through. So we'll talk about MCAS as the third goal we have. The first goal that we have here was to, to create and adopt school-wide rubrics to assess our four learning expectations. And those learning expectations include reading, writing, problem solving and collaboration. So we have been working on that for four years now. We have a committee that does that. And we have had, more recently this year, our committee meets every week. We had a professional development that was created that had each staff member be a student for a day. Our curriculum leaders taught a class and they were highlighting different learning expectations. So every, so they taught 20-minute classes and every teacher rotated through like they were a student. So it was very meaningful in many ways. They realized how hectic that can be in a day for a student, that sometimes you just need a transition before you go into, you know, from ELA to all of a sudden into pre-calculus, for instance. So that was very meaningful because we were able to really look at how students engage in these learning expectations. We have assessed students on each of these in different departments. We did that last year. We did it this quarter two. We'll do it again quarter four. So the core values and belief committee has already analyzed that data and the curriculum leaders will be doing that with their departments next week. So that's where we are on that now. So we will be assessing again at, on quarter four and then looking at that data again in, in September. Our second goal includes a newer goal, which is implementing active learning strategies that promote problem-solving and higher-order thinking skills. In the past, we had looked at learning objectives and purpose, so we took it a little bit further. So as an evaluator, we look, we look for that in every evaluation. We do give feedback to teachers on that. And more recently, we've had each curriculum leader do observations of their department members, specifically looking at those strategies. And we'll continue to find ways to create PD or even informal PD within departments and how to reach that higher-order thinking and to make learning more active. Our last one is an MCAS goal and that is to maintain 98% or better, 92% or better, 85% or better respectively on ELA math and biology. And we continue to, I think, accomplish this. And one of the ways that we do that is through co-support classes for our inclusion, you know, to target those, those subgroups. And we also offer tutoring in all three of them. So we identify the students who are in need of that, who we believe need that, and that's taught by content teachers. So that's just one of the ways that we're doing that. Any questions?
So I did share with the committee, it was a little bit late in the afternoon, the fact that the event that Kalen will be attending can't, is live streamed. And I shared with you the link for that event. It's a 10 to 12 event and they're saying about 10:30. It looks like the high school or the commendation schools will be recognized at the state house. I do believe Mrs. Fox is gonna make an effort to be there as well. So I don't know if there's a specific question?
Just the same two questions. What was a, a focus area that you, out of one of your bullet points you completed but
So I think the biology, you know, is, is more of a struggle, but that department continues to meet to find strategies to do that, and also really encouraging contacting parents to have the students to, you know, attend the tutoring that's provided weekly.
And how many carts are guys?
We have five carts, but we also have Chromebook tubs. You know, to have five, we have one in guidance, we have, we have one in our social emotional learning program, and a couple of our special education rooms, where they have academic support. I believe that's the number, but I will, I will double-check and have Dr. Starkey, you know, confirm that I have that number correct.
Thank you.
Very good. Sherry?
I'm just curious, when is the MCAS tutoring by the faculty?
The MCAS tutoring is, we-
After school?
It's after school, right, and it's by a content teacher, so it is provided by a content teacher in our building.
Once a week?
Once a week.
And for how, how long would you guess?
It's for the entire year until that test is taken.
Oh, okay, so it starts early in, in, in-
Yes, it does. And it takes a little while to identify the ninth graders who will need that for the bio-MCAS, but I believe we have a little bit more time for that. You know, in terms of tenth graders, I think they really hit the ground running, guidance, knowing who needs to be targeted, and then bringing that up and identifying that pretty early in the year.
And your attendance is pretty good?
It is pretty good. One other way that we do that is not through content teachers, but we've been, we've been able to create what we call the TNT lab, it's in the very back of the library, testing and tutoring, that each period, we have a paraprofessional who runs that, students can go there for, to make up tests, to get tutoring from that paraprofessional, and also peer tutoring, and that's been very, very successful. So if we have a student, for instance, who's struggling biology, they might go to that after-school tutoring, but they might also go once or twice a cycle here to get targeted tutoring from a peer, an National Honor Society student, or a paraprofessional.
If it makes you, it, it all entangled, Kaylin, you'll know, when I had a leadership meeting the other day, one of the students asked if I was going, if I was looking for the tutoring session, I looked like I was in need of some direction, I was heading in that direction, I said, no, I was actually running a meeting.
And it's funny, it might sound like TNT, what do you mean, a TNT lab, TNT, right, there you go.
Does anybody have anything else? No?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kaylin.
Mike and Bethany? Excellent. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the FES and AES community. So, as we've been doing, since I have come on board, Ms. Penalt and I have been working very collaboratively with our goals, so with that, we'll continue to move forward in that way. So the first goal, if you recall, is by working collaboratively, we will implement a comprehensive literacy framework across all grades, a hundred percent of our students will be successful, strategic readers possessing the necessary skills and strategies to read fluently, and it goes on to say, as shown by eighty-five percent of our students being on grade level with their instructional reading levels as measured by the BATS. So initiatives, benchmark assessment has been administered in grades one through three, and as you can imagine, we did it in the fall and the winter, so we had some data meetings that took place. And we set some goals, and interventions were put in place from there. And for example, I'll share out for grade one, and for, at, in the fall, at FES, sixty-five percent of our students were on level or higher. We saw a twelve percent gain, so seventy-seven percent of our students at the winter benchmark at FES were on level or higher. At AES, in the fall, it was sixty-four percent on level or higher, and then we saw a fourteen percent gain there, so it's seventy-eight percent of Ms. Penalt's students in grade one are on level or higher. So that's an example of, we're making gains, not only just gains, these are pretty significant gains, that's putting us well on the way of meeting this goal. Some, so how is this happening? So implementation of the comprehensive literacy framework, teachers are meeting daily for small groups, so as you can imagine, students are coming around teacher table, there are specific tailored meaningful lessons that the teachers are implementing, there's a phonics focus, if need be, for that specific group of students, students are being asked to read aloud, read to self, and then there's independent reading conferences with the teacher and student, so we can ask some comprehension questions as we continue to build their comprehensive skills. Also, other resources teachers have, there's the utilization of newly purchased leveled reading bookrooms, so depending on whatever level the children may be, from the benchmark assessments, the teachers can go right into a, a bookroom, grab those resources, those books, and then they go back to the classroom and implement it, so it's something they easily have at their fingertips, they can get it and go from there. And as my colleagues have said about common planning, again, at our schools as well, it's an important time, and that time's used to review a book about guided reading titled "The Next Step Forwarding Guided Reading" by Jan Richardson, and it was great, because Dr. Correa was able to get us guided reading embedded PD through A-plus literacy, in which we had Julie Allsworth actually come to our schools, who actually has done training with Jan Richardson. So, put that all together, we're seeing the significant gains with our students, because not only the PD, what the teachers are getting, but they're taking that PD and they're putting it in place in their classrooms. So, as I gave you example of grade one, we are making not only gains, but significant gains to reach our goal number one.
For goal number two, again, as Dr. Sullivan said, we've worked together, and we want to see that increase in MCAS over a three-year period. And again, Dr. Sullivan, Mr. Ward and I continuously look at MCAS data, as Dr. Sullivan mentioned, the comprehension issue, and Mr. Ward just kind of talked about, you know, using the BATS for an assessment, and the guided reading, and the leveled literacy libraries that we have, to really focus on comprehension, starting at that younger level. So hopefully, Dr. Sullivan will really start seeing some changes of the kids moving up to fourth grade. As well as the implementation of the literacy framework that Dr. Correa worked on, the three elementary schools have really worked on implementing that also. So again, reviewing of MCAS data, just to give an example, identified area of concern, an example in math at Assawamset was measurement this past year, below the state by two points, and I know Freetown Elementary had algebra as one of their areas of concern at Freetown Elementary. So in terms of what are we doing, we share those results even down as far as kindergarten. So even looking at vocabulary, trying to get those vocabulary-rich classrooms down at the younger levels, really looking at the progression of those subjects up to third grade, also even looking at the program that we're using, when are we teaching those particular domains, and making sure that it's, you know, covered thoroughly before the MCAS test. Another thing, just reviewing our TOEOne instruction, always looking at what the teachers are doing in the classroom, you know, especially in math without interventions. One of the things we're doing, both at Freetown Elementary and at Assawamset, is a math workshop model that we've started, I believe, newly last year. That was, again, PD for our third graders, and we also use the book by Dr. Nikki Newton about a math workshop model, which is basically small group, small group math instruction, so they can really kind of differentiate with kids, and give kids, you know, instruction at their level and their need. Creation of the Google accounts down to grade one this year, which was phenomenal, we have grade one students also on Chromebooks, using Google Docs to address that standard of producing writing, including keyboarding skills, so that's something we've worked on this year also. And then just to speak to science, we did create science labs across the two elementary schools, so a lot more hands-on inquiry-based science, as well as PD that's been offered in and after school this year.
And the final goal, goal number three, was, both of us agreed that we will engage families by implementing interactive curriculum nights. So, so far initiatives met, just speaking for Freetown Elementary at this point, we've done, on March eighth, we had a tea time and book tasting, a tea time being a miniature golf course was set up in the gymnasium, and that took place, some families were there, and then the other group of families were inside of the library, doing a book tasting, so they're looking at different book genres and getting a feel what it, it's like to go through one of those books. Another night that we had, which was a district event for AES and FES, was the Title One Family Night, which we had a magical storyteller come to Freetown, and families were able to enjoy that night. Recently, at FES, we had the math night, well over a hundred, I don't want to say families, excuse me, a hundred students and their families were there for that night, so they were able to feel what it's like to be a student within a specific grade level of a mathematical thinker. At AES, they had their read aloud night that already took place, they had their book tasting night, and I'll put in a little plug for Ms. Penalt, and AES right now is their STEM night, has been canceled a couple of times, so next Wednesday, April eleventh, at six PM, they have their STEM night going on.
The winter STEM night.
The winter STEM night, which is now into spring, but nevertheless, with a few cancellations. And other things that we're doing is, as you can imagine, we're now starting to think about next year, and the case screening, and, and having that communication out there with the outside providers, as we have incoming, students coming in that are already participating in like daycares or preschools around, so we can have that open conversation with those students. So, any questions that you have about goals?
Anybody have anything for either one of the elementary schools?
Karen, if you don't, before they both leave, just to give them credit in two different categories, because it happened today, is able to attend the grandparents' day at Assawamset, packed house, grade one performance, Bethany and the staff did a phenomenal job, it was a great event, so that was kind of my highlight today with, with her school, I was over there, and Mike's in the process, totally different realm of securing, but an exciting piece, a technology grant through the, Mike?
The Greater Forward Economic Development Educational Group, and we're, it's pretty-
It's a pretty significant, they're talking up to close to thirty thousand dollars in technology, so some of those Chromebooks and carts and tubs that you were talking about are part of, and he's worked with the technology, the, the grant's being submitted this week-
Correct, yeah.
-with a quick turnaround, and it's been some time since Freetown has been recognized by this group, they reached out to, to Mike, so we're excited, I'm, I'm jumping a little bit ahead, but we have some assurances that I think if we do what we need to do, we should get some recognition. So just two different examples of, as much as the schools are working together, of kind of unique circumstances that highlight the schools, thanks.
Great, thank you. Steve?
How many Chrome carts need to be schools?
So, at Freetown, we have one from first grade, second grade, third grade, and we have one actually in the library, so we have four. In kindergarten, each classroom has a tub, which has five Chromebook tubs.
And that's part of the, and, and he's filled some, some of those numbers into the grant, which will then also help Lakeville, even though the grant will go towards Freetown, we'll be able to then move some money into the budget-
Sure.
-and focus in those.
Just four Chromecart today. You could? Steve? You have something? Well, thank you all very much. Okay. Old business, class size, staffing and transportation updates?
I don't, I, I, I think I mentioned last meeting, I will have a class size update at the April twenty-fifth meeting, provide you one in early March, numbers don't tremendously fluctuate, but maybe we'll have some kindergarten numbers at that point, too, so I will have a class update at our next meeting. As far as staffing, I just would want to bring to your attention, we typically, after April vacation, actually, we've done it earlier, but I've held off a little bit, we will start posting the next school year, right, nineteen, eighteen, nineteen school year postings for retirements and resignations, and we usually do that the first week in May, late April, so we can secure those positions. All of that's always contingent, question, based on, obviously, the budgets being approved, but the principals know that, but in order to actually set, so we'll be, we'll be posting those positions, they're not new positions, they're, they're either replacement resignation to the retirement type of positions, and right now, I believe, we maybe have eight to ten of those, but that'll be that first week, so that's, that's the most obvious staffing update, other than, you know, kind of securing long-term and, and short-term substitutes at this point. As far as transportation, Steve, you can feel free to, to jump in, Steve has represented the school committee on multiple transportation committee meetings, regular trans, regular ed transportation with first student and the company, and I, I think we've had a lot of success, I think we've made a lot of progress, and the community's going to be pleased by the school committee being represented there, because we were able to do some things, such as try to get bus, not try, to get our bus routes out in, in June, as opposed to waiting to August for the coming year. We've made some adjustments with the two bus, reductions of two buses, we've seen what those routes will look like, the principals will have an opportunity to see the impact that it has. We've talked about making sure there's information there available. Steve, I think those are probably the biggest highlights, in that it is our intent to get information out sooner to the communities in Freetown and Lakeville, and we feel that Mr. Zendis and his assistants have come to both of the sessions, Mr. Baker and I have been present with Steve, and had success. We don't have another one scheduled, because we feel like we're pretty much on track, is that?
It's a communication plan, is this more of when, you know, so by the June timeframe, we should have the kindergarten numbers, so I think it should at least give a good, again, draft, it's not going to be finalized until September, right, but at least gives a, parents enough planning time, essentially.
So for the, for those students that we know about, obviously, the planning will be, I think the interesting piece will be, now that we have that two-month window with so many new students coming in, the impact, and obviously, adjustments that will need to be made. We usually put some standard line, and our bus routes even in August, right, that all of this is subject to change based on that piece, and we'll continue with that trend, but we are trying to, for really, I think, discussions at this table, try to make sure we communicate and get that information out as soon as possible to parents, and we're pretty excited about that.
Great, very good. Okay, FY eighteen budget, private support?
A couple of areas that I reported on last time, maintenance and legal, continue to be going in the wrong direction. The question was asked about legal, where we are at this point. We're about fifty-four thousand chart to date. A high percentage of it is in special education, a fair amount in, you know, regular education and general administration, and then there's a piece in collective bargaining, so it's, it's, it's spread among a number of things, but we have had a hearing the last couple of weeks in the office, and I don't have that bill yet, and I'm sure it's going to be substantial, but in the maintenance area, unfortunately, things continue to break. We had, last week, water coming up out of the ground about twenty yards past first base on the baseball field. The guys dug down, found the pipe, fixed it, but, you know, it was more than six feet down, so by fixing it ourselves, we saved some money on it, but the fear, obviously, is if you have one old pipe in the ground that has a problem, how many others do you have? So, but the pressure looks good, so we, we're not aware that anything else is leaking, but it's, it's just, you know, you run the same risk. So we're, you know, kind of hanging in there, doing the best we can.
Do you have a cost for the, the maintenance?
Pardon me, how much we're short in maintenance?
Yeah, how much are we short in maintenance?
Probably about thirty-five thousand right now. Now, we're obviously hoping to pick up some money in some other areas, and, you know, cover some of our shotfalls, so that's where we are now.
And an insurance payout you're expecting?
For the storms, yeah.
Yeah, we will get some reimbursement for insurance, we, we do have a, you know, a five thousand deductible, but we will get some reimbursements for some of the things, and we have filed the reports with them.
Does anybody have anything on the FY eighteen?
Thank you, Fred.
I have no E and D.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure you're doing the same math that we're doing here, you're adding up those numbers, you know what our E and D amount is, which is about eight thousand dollars, so you're talking about a, a real tight thing, as we try to take a look at revenue coming in, receipts and salaries and adjustments that are made, and-
Yeah.
-Mr. Baker will continue to keep you updated at the next meeting we'll have, will be that much further along.
I mean, there are still a number of things in the budget that could go one way or another, you know, obviously, something like the fuel account varies greatly, and, so, I mean, we're, you know, we're still looking to see how much we can cover.
Are they doing the barn repair roofs in-house, or?
We're, right now, waiting to see where we get back on the insurance, depending on how much they give us on it and what else we have. We've, we tend to think that someone else will have more expertise, we did fix it ourselves last time, and-
The delay on that right now is that insurance piece, Bob, rather than go ahead and spend that money, we want to see what those numbers look like, so.
Sure?
This is always the time of the year that we get updated on the substitute line item, how are we with substitutes?
How are we on what?
Substitutes.
We're doing better than last year, you know, it looks like at this point, we're breaking pretty much even, so we're, we're doing better than we did last year.
Okay, anybody else? Anything? No?
That's enough good news.
I know. Assawamset statement of interest update?
We do have some good news on this item. We, we did submit the statement of interest electronically, and Mr. Baker provided the necessary minutes from the votes and the minutes as part of that process. Everything's now electronically uploaded, from, with MSBA, we did that last week, the deadline is actually April sixth, so we certainly have met that, we've received, we've received acknowledgement of our statement of interest, really, like, you know, kudos to Mr. Baker and Mr. Souza, who did the, the majority of the work. I've kept Bethany up to date, as the principal of the school, so for school council and PTO, those parents over there can be aware, but-
Could, could we just explain a little bit, so folks understand what that statement of interest is about?
Sure, absolutely.
The statement of interest gives us the ability to apply for state money for any number of types of renovation, or systems work, or maintenance within the, within the school. It's a competitive area where, you know, last year, about eighty-nine schools applied, and about eighteen were funded, so, I mean, it certainly is, we were, however, interviewed, they did come here, they did look at everything, some of them, they did not do that, and just sort of ruled them out on paper, so there's never any real guarantee, but, you know, we could be eligible for sixty percent funding on certain things if they deem that our need is greater than some other people's.
And, and the focus of this one is on the Assawamset-
Assawamset Elementary School, specifically.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, I think the other thing is, it's done, not that the town of Lakeville wasn't interested, but I certainly have seen quite a bit of activity in the last year or so in relation to helping with projects over there as it relates to that facility, so our continuation, the town, the Board of Selectmen in Lakeville had to support the statement of interest, and they did as well, so that has moved forward, and I'll keep the, this group updated, as you probably recall from last year, it's usually like a mid, mid to late fall timeframe, where you're, where they've done a thorough review when you come back, so I'll keep the group updated. But it was submitted on time, and we feel confident, they, they were complimentary last time when we made it through that first round of the detail, and we were able to give some updates in relation to that submission again.
Now it's a wait and see.
That's right.
Fingers, fingers crossed, many thanks to you and Mr. Souza for all your, all your hard work. If no one has, go ahead.
What I was going to suggest is maybe just going through the reports from the directors that are here, and then you want to do the-
I'd actually like to take a quick, two-minute, two-minute question and answer, like, how are we doing, guys? Do you have any questions for us? Anybody? I'm hoping-
and they did as well, so that has moved forward, and I'll keep this group updated, as you probably recall from last year, it's usually like a mid to late fall timeframe where you're, where they've done a thorough review when you come back, so I'll keep the group updated. But it was submitted on time, and we feel confident, they were complimentary last time when we made it through that first round of the detail, and we were able to give some updates in relation to that submission again.
Now it's a wait and see.
That's right.
Fingers crossed. Many thanks to you and Mr. Souza for all your hard work. If no one has...
What I was going to suggest is maybe just going through the reports from the directors that are here, and then...
I'd actually like to take a quick, two-minute question and answer, like, how are we doing, guys? Do you have any questions for us? Anybody? I'm hoping someday to see one of you guys up here.
They're still awake, so that's good.
Yeah, they're not asleep yet.
There's no takers?
They may.
Okay.
I think, yeah, they may not want to stay, so we're going to be doing this whole budget thing, they may want to take off, because you guys have to get to bed, remember?
Make sure all your...
And we don't do the same thing at every meeting, so feel free to come back anytime.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good day.
Okay, I think we can continue with the reports.
My suggestion for the chair would just be go through the director's reports, that way, if I do my presentation, the committee can then just engage in a budget conversation, we can kind of wrap up the meeting that way. The committee, if the chair is okay with that?
Mr. Baker?
So, Mr. Baker, kind of a continuation, if you would, I have...
As you can see, the food service is doing quite well, we've improved over last year. Sales and participation continue to be up. We have done quite a bit of work preparing for school sports, for the spring sports. We're being handicapped somewhat by the weather, for example, the baseball field isn't going to be able to be used for like three weeks, but, you know, the athletic director will schedule at the opponent's fields, and hopefully, you know, flip-flop that in the next game with them, but, you know, they are able to practice as long as we avoid that third base area. Even if it weren't for that, the field still would be problematic, because it's so wet, probably wouldn't take quite as long, but it still would be problematic, so we're, you know, we're getting everything ready to, they have been practicing sometimes in the parking lot, a couple of days they got outside, they went into the gym a little bit, but they're just trying to do the best they can. Couple of things that I wanted to make note of, we probably will recommend an increase in the lunch price of the elementary schools this year. The last time, if you remember, we did increase the secondary schools, the elementaries haven't been increased in more than 10 years, and we anticipate we will get that recommendation from the federal government. Last year, they recommended that we, last time, increased both, and we just increased one. The second thing is that while we looked at the athletic director's information early in the budget process, we really didn't make a decision on that or deal with it at that time. We will ask the athletic director to update the situation in case it has changed since then, but we do need to look at athletics.
Related to the food service, when Andrea was here, I asked a question, but we have the surplus, what's the plan, right? We got a lot of capital in the food service that break down or what have you, do we have some sort of plan to address either some aging equipment or break fic mechanism, what have you? So I know we don't have an answer tonight, but we're talking about the increase in sales of some revenues there, those should be applied to hopefully...
We can incorporate that.
Yeah, we've actually, this year, more so than four prior years, we have replaced some of the equipment, it was, I mean, we need to continue to do it, obviously, but, you know, we have replaced some of it this year, and, you know, are trying to do that, not necessarily wait till something breaks, but some of the things that are shaky, because we've spent too much maintenance on them.
Anybody else?
Yeah, one could, we did increase milk prices a couple of times.
We did, and we're not going to ask to increase them again, yeah.
Anybody else? No? Good, thank you. Dr. Korea?
This, the first thing is the professional development, so Monday was our last PD day for the year, it was a half-day, and we had staff engaged in various things. Most staff were engaged in curriculum and assessment review, and it was cross-school, so FES and AES teachers met together, doing some alignment horizontally, and then we also had some vertical alignment going on as well, looking at the special education students and transitioning buildings, so those special educators met together to look at the transitions and how to make that the easiest possible for our students, and we also had departments like Unified Arts meeting vertically, to discuss some of the extra things they did this year, which were very successful, like the music festival, and the wellness department just did the scholarship basketball game with the staff versus students, so they reviewed some of the additional things they put on the agenda this year, and talked about how we could do them again next year and make them better. So there were a number of different things happening in the half-day PD this past Monday, and the PD committee has been continuing to meet and has identified social-emotional learning as a continued area of focus for next year, so we will have some additional PD around the SEL topic. I listed for you the MCAS dates there, so we have MCAS currently happening at the middle school this week, we have sixth grade and seventh grade, and eighth grade will be next week, and AES and FES following, so, and then grays at the end of April, so we have several MCAS ELA happening this month, and then I also just recently attended with Desi an accountability workshop, so I'll be able to give you some updates on that as we get closer to the next MCAS release of data and our scores after the testing, I'll be able to give you more information on the new accountability system that they'll be using. Mr. Petota, you heard Mr. Petota talking about the Teaching and Learning Alliance, and I am very pleased with the work that Deb Romeo is doing over there. Just recently, she came in and she did some work with one of the sixth-grade classrooms, modeling for the teachers how to do the, how to get the writer's notebook started, and how to get kids to increase their stamina with writing, and how to write on different topics. She also worked with an eighth-grade class on perspective-taking in writing, which was a difficult topic, and, but it was very successful, so I was able to sit in with that, and that way I could continue to support the teachers even when the consultant isn't there. And you heard Mr. Ward and Ms. Pennault talk about some of their upcoming curriculum events and curriculum nights for families that are always well-attended, and the curriculum leaders work very hard to put those in place, and the staff are wonderful about volunteering and being there. And I know I didn't get to see you for the last two meetings, but the Title I Family Night was a success, we would have loved to have more families, we had probably around 25, 25 families from Title I, but it was very successful, and the families were very happy to be able to meet with the reading specialists, ask questions, and then the kids enjoyed having a magical storyteller with us that evening, too.
Very good. Anybody? Anything for Dr. Korea?
Just one quick comment.
Sure.
You have done a phenomenal job of getting into these buildings, of working with the leadership in the buildings, making the connections that really need to happen, I just want to say thank you. I knew we were doing the right thing, we brought you up, whatever, you know, just, you know, pat myself on the back, but you really have done an excellent job, and I can tell from the leadership that I'm not alone in that observation.
Thank you, I'm fortunate to work with a wonderful group of people, so I think they feel the same way.
Anybody else?
Yeah, that's right.
And we have...
The other director's report, obviously, Alan's not here, the intent was to make sure that you had the documents, so it was submitted as a report, it's their intent on the 25th to follow up with some details and certainly respond to answer any questions.
If you have any questions, then, okay, very good. Subcommittee updates? Oops, I'm sorry.
Just, can you, because this is a key piece, can we resend this in the April 25th packet?
The roundtable?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would say we get Chromebooks for the meeting, but if another topic comes to...
We might get a budget.
We would save $90,000 in the school budget.
Oh, it would not.
In about 100 trees.
Okay, Subcommittee updates?
So we're still a work in progress, but we have time.
We are still a work in progress, correct.
Okay.
That would have been the superintendent evaluation Subcommittee. Sorry.
Policy Subcommittee?
We have not met, next meeting is the April 25th.
Okay, and Regional Income?
The meeting was supposed to be this evening, but need to be rescheduled, looking at some dates in the next couple of weeks.
Will you send out a...
No, go ahead.
Will you send out an email when you've got a date, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. FY19 budget hearing?
Yeah, do you want to take a two-minute setup?
Yes.
And get the screen set up when we go? We do have a hard copy. So, good, I, you know, for, so here we are, here we are at our FY19 school budget hearing, intended to be for the public, not a huge public, thank you for the few individuals that are here, obviously, the intent is as much to make sure that the presentation gets on our website and through Lancam, obviously, out to the communities. I have 50 slides, this is a similar presentation to January, what I, with permission from the chair and vice chair, and certainly the other members, I'd like to highlight those significant changes that were made from the January presentation, and really, not that it's not significant, and the priorities and the vision and the district goals and recognizing school committee members and administrators aren't important, but obviously, for purposes of engaging in discussion, detailed discussion tonight in relation to the budget and where we're at, I think it's important that I, I'll try to synthesize for tonight and turn to those slides that I think are most appropriate for the budget hearing for tonight. So with that, with that in mind, obviously, our school committee has not changed, other than I'll have to change the chair and vice chair, right, and flip that through. I'd be remiss, obviously, if I didn't comment on the leadership team that was here earlier and the support of the school committee. The introduction vision, I think this slide right here, before I actually get to those slides, really sums up the first eight slides, really, that I'm not going to spend a ton of detail. A budget's a reflection of our priorities, and that sentence really should capture for both communities, both of Freetown and Lakeville, where this school committee and where the leadership team is in relation to where we think the funding should be spent, and I think you'll see that throughout in a pattern in relation to where we feel the limited resources that we have should go and should continue to go. So, as I stated, 50 slides, you really get to nine before you see any significant changes from January, and just a couple of highlights on the budget assumptions, so you start early on, I guess the good news, bad news is the state hasn't really done much in relation to making adjustments as it relates to funding, and it is the third piece, Mr. Baker talks a lot about it, and it's a concerning piece, right, as when you looked at the monies that you're going to receive from the towns, but also the fact that if the state's numbers are not going up, then what happens is you need to ask for additional funding from the locals, and the assumptions for the state are consistent. They haven't changed for the worse, but at this point, we're not optimistic that we're going to see significant additional Chapter 70 money, circuit breaker money, or regional transportation. What I would note on this slide is down here, we have made an adjustment to contractual obligations as we continue the negotiation process, we did not feel it was realistic where we're at to continue with a 0.5% projected year one, so we have incorporated a 1% increase for all employees, and when I get to the assessment sheet, we'll talk to that. We are still looking at the establishment of a special education stabilization fund within this hearing, but I do know that probably is going to come up in conversation. You'll note that it has now been submitted, at the time, we were talking about, is our intent to submit a statement of interest, we've already done that for AES, and obviously, we are still considering two separate articles, one for the special education stabilization and for the maintenance vehicle, and that needs to be a discussion in the coming, maybe in the coming 15 to 20 minutes or so, a half hour, as we get to decide if the committee wants to pursue that, because both towns are in the process of now trying to secure and asking for submissions of any articles that are part of their special meetings. So that's the most significant piece there. The next two slides, which I know are not great to see up here, and this committee has the luxury, and it actually is easier when you see it on the website, to have the one-sheet assessment, which addresses the budget, which now reflects an April 2nd number, and what I will do is, one, cut to the chase in relation to the total budget spending, it has gone up slightly to $38,398,474, you'll see that in the next couple of slides, much better than you see it here. I think the most significant thing for the towns to know is this increase of about $145,000 from a previous assessment increases the assessment for Freetown to $675,836, for Lakeville from $572,562, to a percentage increase of 6.48 for Freetown, 4.2 for Lakeville. Please keep in mind that the assessment increase does include $250,000 for special education stabilization that is required to be part of the assessment, so you just, please keep in mind that the total increase is inclusive of $250,000, which is spread across the two towns, to the tune of in Freetown, 109, in Lakeville, 140. To see that captured a little bit better for slide purposes for those in attendance, so the total budget being presented tonight has yet to be voted on by the school committee is $38,398,474. It is a modest 2.61% increase from last year's budget. Once again, 2.61, $815,635 increase from FY18 total spending. See that captured, once again, in comparison purposes, just looking at the last four years, we have received a 4% increase, a 2% increase, a nearly 6% or 5.9% increase last year, this year, we're projecting or presenting, or I'm presenting tonight in this budget hearing, a 2.61% increase, $38,398,474, inclusive of $250,000 for stabilization, to offset some of that deficit that we've received in special education in the last couple of years. So some major cost increases, the adjustments, the actual columns and areas have not significantly changed, some of the dollar amounts have changed, for example, in the first slide, in the first, the first line, salary increases in steps, that went up as we built in that 0.5% negotiated, potential negotiated settlement for all bargaining units to $683,590. Special ed tuitions, these are the increases on top of FY18, have gone up $266,633, obviously a real volatile area, we'll speak a little bit to that. Health insurance went up 6% overall, $250,000, that did not change from our previous projections. You have some facilities and maintenance increases for $50,000, a modest increase, quite candidly, that probably doesn't cover much of what we need to address, although we are attempting, at least with a vehicle and maintenance, to address one vehicle specifically, but other maintenance and campus needs really wouldn't be covered totally in this, but we've attempted to try to keep the bottom line down. Retirement assessment, $29,000, retirement health assessment, $26,000, those are numbers from last time. As I've stated, there's maybe 10 to 12 fact sheets, I'll just simply go through a couple of them quickly. The health insurance projections did not change from our previous presentation, 6% total. Again, keep in mind, and I think it's important that people understand, for industrial school district, it's not the town side that's picking up the health insurance, and when you look at a $38 million budget, look at the, look at the health insurance increase, the community should need to take a look at the fact that it's over $5 million to provide health insurance for employees and retirees as well. Just a couple of other items there, we did make the adjustment on salaries increases for scheduled steps, we do see a smaller number in FY19, we are projecting some savings in turnover. So we showed you the total increase for salary steps and schedules, and now we've backed that down a little bit with some savings, still an increase of $583,590 projected. Our staff maintained here, going to go through regular transportation, we referenced earlier in the night, we're looking at about, savings of about $100,000 with the savings of the two buses, but we add to, obviously, include fuel adjustment, so the savings for two bus routes was actually more than that, but when you make, when you add into that fuel adjustment, we're saving just under $100,000 through transportation, but still maintaining the appropriate services for our students and safety as well. Capital debt, it's going down this year, that did not change from the previous slide. We are seeing the numbers go down as we backed out of the technology piece, it does include the pool, the track, the tennis courts, grays, and the middle school continues to show those, but it did go down, we were able to, obviously, offset some of our numbers there. Special education continues to be a volatile circumstance, so even though we have shown an increase of $266,000 with tuitions, concern continues to be, you can't predict what's coming in the door next, and so what is shown here, and I actually put the highlighted here, 16, 17 numbers, because the state has not released the most recent numbers, we have numbers, but they have not... have numbers, but they have not shown the high needs numbers, but it's, again, just an indication of the total percentage of students who are in need and the growing need for services and programs in identified areas, and I, and I stress that sentence, in identified areas in both towns, as the communities continue to grow and bring more housing potential opportunities, it certainly brings with it a cost, it brings with it some revenue for the town, but it certainly provides, or, or significant growing needs of services for those students coming into the towns and into the schools ultimately. Excess and deficiency, as you can see the bottom line there, that has not changed, and it's something we, we are obviously generally concerned about, how do we build this back up to some of those numbers that you see in previous years, and we become self-sufficient, right, moving forward, as we talked about in eighteen, we're concerned about meeting that bottom line, we may be, in all likelihood, tapping into most, if not all, of that money that you see presented here that was certified by the state. So budget highlights from eighteen, nineteen, right, we are looking at level services here, or at least one board member may refute that with me, we're not adding staff, we're trying to maintain services for our students, we're trying to address some equities in the town, we are seeing continued enrollment increases, not dramatic, but enrollment increases at all the schools. We've, we've really made an aggressive pursuit of revenue in this FY nineteen budget, and we're doing that through ongoing conversations in athletics, in food service, with facility usage, with the school choice program, right, we're aggressively building in a projected revenue of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which would be twenty-one more students than we currently have in school choice this current year. We are looking at options in special education transportation with Mr. Baker and, and Mrs. Harrington providing, and probably in the next school committee meeting, if not the meeting after that, some, some more detail. The stabilization fund needs to be an ongoing discussion, trying to maintain paraprofessional staffing, class size, all those priorities, again, our budget reflects those priorities. The continued textbook plan, and really the delayed textbook plan to the extent that we're still having some difficulty meeting Phase Three of that plan. Maintenance and projects are updating, we're, we're obviously building a vehicle at the tune of six, close to sixty thousand dollars that we are looking at to be a separate article, it's a one-time cost, that would be spread across the two towns based on formula two, so it'd be a fifty-nine thousand dollar cost, but it would be a cost specific to the formula for Free Town and, and to Lakeville, and Mr. Baker has those numbers as well. Contract negotiations are continuing with at least two bargaining units, so we need to maintain that, and obviously, we need to take a look at the concern about increased energy and maintenance costs for all of the schools. The next slides, and I, I promised you folks that I would give you kind of the shorter version, reflect our, our continued emphasis on class size, maintaining the integrity of class size at all the schools, and then we get into a, a pretty lengthy piece about the separate articles in the capital plan. I'm not going to click on the capital plan, which is a multi-year plan, you can on the website, and those community members, not only here, but that would like to at home see that, you'll see some of the detail behind the multi-layered plan, multi-year plan. So the three articles that the school committee needs to consider as part of their vote, potential vote, in addition to the operational budget, is the, is the establishment of the special education stabilization fund, which is a no-cost article, but you need to do that first, and then, as I built into this proposed budget tonight, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would be earmarked for that special education stabilization fund. This committee has taken an initial vote, it requires the vote of both Lakeville and Free Town for it to be established and move forward, separate votes, right, not only the establishment of the fund, but also the, the dollar amount. And, and we just need to make a, we'll have to talk strategy in relation to how we want to proceed specifically with those two articles in both towns, and if we do want to do so. It's contained within this budget presentation for tonight. And lastly, the, the third article is for a maintenance vehicle, and for anybody who is interested, most, Mr. Souza would have been present tonight, we actually told him to hold off, figuring we may actually be going to Board of Selectment meetings to go into more detail, or for town meeting, and you will see, this is slide thirty-two, this speaks to the special education definition of what the stabilization fund is, the amount to be appropriated to the fund is included in each town's assessment, again, bottom line, that percentage increase includes the two fifty, the balance of the reserve fund can exceed two percent of the annual required net school spending. Tuition, and that's, this is really the, the genesis for all this conversation, right, the, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars doesn't come close to, to capturing or recapturing the, the monies that we had to take from, from E and D in the last couple of years in relation to the gap between what was needed in special education services and what we had budgeted. Maintenance vehicles noted here, it's comparable replacement to the two thousand and one Ford F three fifty dump truck, it's a Ford F four fifty, it's a fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dol, four, forty-three dollar truck and plow, and you'll see, not only the inventory listed here, which is challenging, but ten or twelve or thirteen slides that were provided of the, the aging, deterioration, and the need for it, and certainly we would have, obviously, facilities or assistant facilities director available for future town meetings or for Board of Selectmen if we need to provide some detail and some rationale. Right about now, you guys are thinking, so this is Mr. Mediris' version of a short, shorter scaled-down piece, but I am trying to obviously maintain the integrity of the presentation, the importance of the hearing, I'm just kind of going through a couple of the slides here that reflect that. Keep in mind, I've kept the slide in, because I do think it's significant, that we continue to see things not in this budget that would really raise the bar for all our schools, right, the fact that we don't have another ELL teacher, even though this year we, we built in some funds to come up with some additional supports because of the numbers, the fact that we're continually looking at a special education classroom, and we are do, looking to do some things with SEL, technology, the intermediate library media specialist, the part-time secretary, again, these are all positions, staffing mainly, but also the textbook upgrades, the increased funding, things that are not part, and I just gave you a, a kind of a rough estimate of that and the reason why, we're talking about another half million dollars, that would certainly be a, from my perspective, a, a budget buster. The reality is, though, our essential things that, down the line, we kind of really try to see how we can get some of these back into our schools. Next steps in the process, really, it's turning it over to you folks tonight to see ultimately the school committee, and I would strongly encourage the committee, we have not taken formal action the night of a budget hearing previous, and it's not required tonight, but obviously the sooner that we can, the school committee can make a determination on some figures, the sooner we can get out in front to the Board of Selectmen in both Free Town and Lakeville, and have those candid conversations and see where they're, they're at in relation to them. We did forward the assessment sheet, so they have the adjusted assessment sheet, both Board of Selectmen yesterday received that, even though we told them that the, the public meeting is tonight, so they're aware of the details behind it, they'll obviously get a copy of the presentation. Keep in mind, both town meetings, same night this year, right, Monday, June fourth, so it's even, from my perspective, even more imperative than ever, right, that we, because most likely, Mr. Baker will go to one, I'll have to go to another, meaning it's, it's not that we shouldn't probably have this practice anyways, so we're going to have to be sure that, in my opinion, that the, that the finance committees and Board of Selectmen have made their position felt prior to that session, and then decide, maybe based on some recommendations that they have as well, whether we have a facilities director at one location or not, I mean, we have obviously no control over the fact that both town meetings are at the same time, I just want to bring that to your attention. It is, and it continues to be, in my fourth year here, and I know I kind of did the short version, I am probably more excited than ever in relation to the fact that we are raising the bar, you heard from principals and administrators today about the progress we've made, we've got a lot of work, it's really our challenge to try to make sure we give our teachers, our students, the necessary tools and resources to continue to be successful. I'm confident that that can be the case, we've got some work cut out for us, I can go back to any of these slides and highlight those numbers, we made some adjustments from January to address what we thought was, was necessary locally, couldn't make a lot of adjustments in relation to the state, because the state hasn't really provided new information as it relates to numbers, so, as we, as we proceed, we've got some meetings, our next meeting, just keep in mind, folks, is, for school committee members, right now, is scheduled for April twenty-fifth. At that point, we should take formal, a, a formal vote, because then you have thirty days prior to town meetings to take that action, so.
We may also have to, like, stay.
We absolutely could, so I, I certainly would be happy to answer any, any questions. It is technically a public hearing, so if there's, I know we don't have a huge audience, anybody here, I'd turn to the Chair, but we certainly could open it up to respond to any questions as it relates to this, and then turn to the board.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions, comments? No? Okay, I'll, I'll open it up to the board members, and Derek, I saw your hand.
Steve.
Related to the presentation, there's a lot of great information in here, but there's a lot of information that I think is needed for behind the scenes to get the full picture. On the, the topic of, of special ed, especially for the towns, slide number twenty, which talks about the volatility of the numbers, I, I think it would be important to also include on that slide, the numbers that correspond to those students, right, because I think what's missing here is, while the students go up and down in those numbers, the actual cost of that is actually what is a huge issue to the district, so, it, it may be merging a couple of slides, but I think it's just more of, we put this all in one, I think it tells a, a, a better picture of what we're facing as a committee and why the stabilization fund is one option in that particular case.
Agreed.
I know you've gone through this three times already, but.
No, I, I would agree, that certainly, that slide that's up there does not capture it all, you're absolutely right, just the, the sheer numbers, it was simply the, really show that from year to year, there's not even a pattern where you can consistently say there are five students more at this cost, you know, and, and it's problematic, but absolutely, we can give more detail there.
Anything else?
I have a number of things on the budget, but I would maybe stick to the presentation and then.
Okay.
I was going into the budget, so I'm gonna.
Let's do it, we haven't done it, so let's do it.
No, and, and I think this is the, the meat of the, of the whole item here, so, at previous committee meetings, I laid out a thought process that I think builds back E and D over time, and, you know, I've thrown it out there for the committee to digest and, and think of, you know, questions for the superintendent, myself, whoever, because quite frankly, I think from the community standpoint, from our standpoint, you see where we are with E and D. We have zero money, and we'll probably use all of it, or there's a good chance we're going to use the rest of it this year. I have not heard on any thought of building back any of that to this point, other than the thought that I put out there. So, I, I'm willing to listen to other thoughts, but I also believe that there isn't any reason that we can't vote a number tonight, we've, we've, we've had this information, I've laid out a pretty detailed, and I'd like, I'll go over that a little bit again, and I also think that per the superintendent, we gotta talk about the article and the whole special stabilization, special education stabilization fund, and, you know, I'll reiterate what my proposal was for that right now, so that way, hopefully, we can have some discussion and make some motions and votes. First of all, like I said before, I've said previously, I am not in favor of funding the stabilization fund, well, let me, let me, let me regress, I am so as long as we have money and a, and a mechanism to build back E and D. So if we have a mechanism to build back E and D, and we can fund that, and we can fund the stabilization, special education fund, I am absolutely a hundred percent for that. In the absence, in the, in the event that we don't, my proposal is that we reduce school choice funding that is being used as an offset to the towns to reduce their assessment. So, let me kind of simplify this right now. Stabilization fund, that two hundred and fifty thousand that the superintendent has proposed, sits in account, is restricted, could be used for certain funds, and has to meet the approval of us as well as the towns, correct?
Correct.
The preferential method, and the method that we've used to fund this district, in the history of this district and other regional districts, is through E and D. Now, there are other districts that will use a stabilization fund, but I would argue that none of them probably have zero in E and D.
Right.
So, it's, the most important item for us is to fund the budget, and for, for us to have some flexibility to begin to fund stabilization to a, to an appropriate level. And I'm only talking about beginning, because this, by no means, my suggestion is a end-all, be-all, it's a, what I believe is a year after year practice that could build back E and D over time. And after that, there are other things we could do, I think Steve had a good proposal, there should be some parameters of how we use E and D in the district. Right now, I want to see it be used as a mechanism to build E and D. I haven't heard from anybody on either side, the select boards, or this table, a mechanism to build back E and D. And quite frankly, we just heard what type of situation we're in, it's, it's not acceptable. So, I proposed at, at a meeting that we totally take the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we have in school choice as an offset, and remove that as an offset to the budget, and that in turn will increase the assessment to the towns. That will provide us, now, let me explain the fiscal, what I think is fiscal responsible, us being fiscally responsible here, and this being a fiscally responsible plan, we incurred in the, six hundred thousand dollars two years ago, in sudden special education monies that went above and beyond the cost, they, that dug quite a bit into our E and D, and we chose to fund that through E and D. The towns, we never went to the towns and said, folks, this is the responsibility of the towns, they fund the school budget, we took it out of our E and D, and since that time, we've never gone to the towns and said, hey, by the way, this is the responsibility of the towns, it was special education money, it had to be funded, we never went back and did that. And I think that that was, you know, we could say, we could have done it, we didn't do it, I thought it was fiscally responsible for us to not do it, because we understood the position of the towns and the impact that would have had, six hundred thousand would have had on our budgets and the, the ability for our budget to be successful during that time. So, we stayed away from that, I think, very deliberately. We can use special edu, the school choice money as a mechanism to financially help the towns without going to them and saying, hey, we want that six hundred thousand, and incrementally, which I think is responsible to the taxpayer, incrementally build that back by not using school choice to reduce the assessment. If we want to fund the stabilization fund along with that, I, I'm happy to have that discussion, but first and foremost, we need to have a discussion of sustainability and where we are, the fact that we're at eighty thousand and we are right to the bone this year, and we had to dig into it, we can't do that now, next year. So, eighty thousand dollars that we may use over a thirty-eight million dollar budget is not acceptable, it's not acceptable. And I'm sure we'll hear, well, you know, I have to run my household, I don't know anyone that runs a household, forty million dollar budget household, and doesn't have any kind of backup plan.
Right.
So, so my proposal is that, you know, you, the stabilization fund is different, I wouldn't, if it were me, I wouldn't choose to fund it if that was the choice, but if I could have the best of both worlds, I would, I would absolutely fund it.
So, so just so, before discussion, just so everyone knows what Derek has proposed from a financial perspective, if you back out the three seventy-five and ultimately add it to the operational assessment to each town, the budget that you see up there that's increased two point six becomes an increase of three point five five total budget spending. Again, because you're tacking on three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that was being used as an offset that you're not wanting to do. I'm not, I'm not, just, I'm just trying to give you the numbers behind what he has there, that increases the assessment for Free Town to eight percent, eight point zero five, and for Lakeville, five point seven five, up from four point two. That's just, those are just the numbers.
That's without reducing the stabilization.
That's correct, that's correct, that's keeping, that's, that's taking the three seventy-five out, but maintaining the special education stabilization fund. Everybody follow me there, just, I just want to make sure people are clear with what he's, what Derek has presented, right, Derek?
That's correct.
Number wise.
That's absolutely correct.
So, Mr. Mediris, my question, so you take that three hundred and seventy-five thousand
So, Mr. Medeas, my question, so you take that $375,000 that you get from school choice and you put that in the stabilization fund, but then ask for the increase to the towns? No?
Right now, do you want to answer that, Fred? Because you're the director of finance.
Basically, if, right now, the $375,000 is being used to offset the total budget, which means it brings it down. So if you don't do that, you basically land up needing to raise $375,000 more. It doesn't affect, it doesn't do anything to the stabilization fund. It leaves it the way it is.
And that money would stay in the operational budget with the idea being that at the end of the year, you could certify that and that would become certified E and D money. At least that's the intent.
That's my proposal.
I personally think that's not a bad idea, because if you didn't vote at the towns and ask for that $600,000 that we used and you need, you know, the E and D fund, I think, I don't know. I mean, I think you've got to ask for the towns for more money, because it is an ongoing issue.
Before we jump into that, can we answer the question about the funding of the stabilization?
Yes.
Have we done the research to?
I have, yeah.
Okay. So, because I think that's going to be a critical part to this conversation. So the $250,000, where can that be funded from a town perspective?
The town has the right to fund it with any money they have. They can use it to raise and appropriate, which means essentially it goes against the tax rate, which they can do with anything in our budget. I mean, they, you know, if they had enough money sitting around to fund it, they could do it. They can take it from a stabilization fund they have, but it takes a two-thirds vote. Or they can take it from their free cash. I mean, so it's, I talked to the attorney for the state and they're basically neutral toward what the town uses to fund it.
So would that be a separate warrant article that we would basically present to the towns that says, hey, $250,000?
Essentially, you know, part one of it is obviously we have to get the account approved, the stabilization. Part two is, you know, if ahead of time, we come to an agreement with the town that they're going to take it out of a stabilization fund, then, you know, the article could be that specific. If in fact, there's no agreement ahead of time, we're just asking the town to fund it and then it's up to them where they get the money. They could take it out of any funds they have.
But, and if they choose to take it out of another fund, an existing fund, they could reduce their assessment.
Right. They wouldn't have to pass it on to the people because they'd have the money, but that's their call and not ours.
Can that answer that question?
Will, and then.
No, my question's been answered. Thank you. I'm good for now.
I just want to clarify, it would become part of the town's assessment, though.
Yeah, because we're raising, we have to, it becomes part of the assessment in that the assessment is the amount of money we're saying we need. It doesn't necessarily, if they already have the funds, result in anything to the tax rate if they choose to fund it that way.
It's not in their operating assessment essentially.
Right.
We could set up a part of the operating assessment.
You know, because they.
But eventually it would.
I mean, in the case of one, well, actually, in the case of both towns, they have relatively significant available money.
Yes, they do. Yes, that, yes, thank you. Derek?
Yeah, I don't think complicate in this makes any sense. The fact of the matter is if you have a stabilization fund or you don't, they have to come up with the money. So you either fund the operating budget and agree that that's part of, that 250 is part of it, or you don't. So it's simple to say to me, and they could fund our budget any, which way they want, just as well. I mean, they could take it out of stabilization and free cash. So for us to confuse it and say, well, this may make sense if they can use this money, it's our budget. It doesn't matter. So it needs to flow through the operating budget and they've got to decide whether they want to fund our operating budget or not. I don't think it makes fiscal, it's being fiscally responsible to the school district for us to not have a discussion around E and D first and the stabilization account second.
So what happens in year two? So we fund this out of operating $250,000, what happens in year two to the assessment to the towns? I think that's been the ongoing discussion is that you, we do this with the operating system, then all of a sudden every year, there's an additional $250,000 as part of the operating request. And I think that's the part of the.
But it's as simple as not making that part of your request next year. It's as simple as making your request based on spending rather than based on a budget.
It also depends ultimately on whether you need to draw.
Spend it down, exactly.
Because if you, if you put it into the stabilization fund in year one and if you draw nothing from it, then it stays there. You know, if you obviously spend it all, then the assumption would you want to come back and refund it? If you just deal with your operating budget with the total amount, if you don't spend it, it goes into E and D directly.
What happens in the opposite scenario, Steve? What happens when we spend that money down and now becomes an operation and there's no choice? So our history has been the cost of special education keeps rising. $600,000 a couple of years ago, we, you know, where we're at right now and we're trying to create a fund. What happens, Laura mentioned this point at the last meeting, what happens when we fund that account and it all gets spent? It's the same issue you just brought up in the opposite direction.
But the, those funds now become part of the operating, right? Which they now have to fund that as part of it because those are used towards specific special ed costs. And then the additional funding can come from another funding source that the towns can represent.
I think we end up having the same discussion.
I don't, just to answer your question about what we do with school choice, I hear what you're saying. I'm not in support of wiping out the total thing, but the major reason is there needs to be a plan for this. Quite frankly, the other issue is we can only spend those dollars on particular items in the budget. It's not, we don't have the flexibility like we have with E and D. We have a very, a different set of areas that we can actually spend those school choice dollars on. Could we spend them? Most definitely.
But I need, I'm sorry.
School choice is fairly broad. You can't spend it for athletics. You can't spend it for, you know, capital facilities. But 95% of what's in our budget, you could spend it for. It's fairly broad. I mean, you can't use it for a big capital project, though, or for athletics, or for something extracurricular that's outside the curriculum.
But wasn't part of the reason, reflecting back on what you said, Derek, about how E and D has taken such hits largely because of sped, unforeseen sped expenditures, which tend to be escalating at exponential rates. Part of the reason for the stabilization was also an educational process for the communities to understand that it's untenable, that we can't continue to go into operating budget or E and D. We need to have people understand that this is something we need town support on. Stabilization shows that we are isolating that number like Free Town Elementary did for years and saying, this is what we need for this particular group of students, a number which is increasing every year. And we don't see the trend reversing. We've got high needs, we've got all these other things that we're addressing and there are unfunded mandates. We have relied on E and D to the point now where we have goose egg, E and D. And that is, to your point, untenable, unsustainable. We can't go on like that. So I'm actually sort of embracing what you're proposing, but I would want both. I would sincerely, even if we can't do the 250 in stabilization, I would like to see something in there for the purpose of providing an educational framework for the communities to understand that this is a mandate, this is a need, and we have a responsibility to meet it.
Well, Derek, your proposal did include voters.
Yes, it did.
It did. So that 8.05 for Free Town and 5.75 was with the 250.
Stabilization, correct.
Okay.
Laura? I just want to make a point again that it only provides that clarity in year one, that you're using that stabilization fund for an unanticipated cost. Once that cost becomes a part of the operational budget, it becomes a blur again. And we just have escalating special ed costs that nobody can point to a certain item that we spent it on.
Well, that's like an override. Same thing with an override. If you get an override for the school, it's great for the first year, it goes to the school. But for the next period of time that override's in place, it can go to anything the town decides it can go to. It's the same thing.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question, Steve. I know that you said, and I respect that you said that you don't fully support it. Please, please understand that. But I'm looking for you or the rest of the committee to tell me, what is your plan for bringing E and D to an acceptable level then? You asked for a plan. I'm giving you a plan. I'm providing you a plan. School choice is the mechanism. I want to hear a solution that says, what I don't want to hear is let's, this is a problem. What I want, what we need to hear, and you know this, we talk about this, we need solutions. So I'm desperately asking, fine, provide me another solution. I don't see one. So I have no problem with what your request was. The problem I have is then provide me a solution. And I don't see one right now.
If I may add, Fred, usually when you get stuff to put in E and D, it's money you can take that we didn't spend, that can be certified by the state, and then that goes into our little stabilization that's called E and D.
The definition of E and D is it's the net-net of everything in the present budget at the end, plus what you brought forward from before. So it's, you know, if you have $10,000 and you manage to spend $20,000 less than your budget, you have $30,000.
Got it. But we don't have any of that.
Right. But it does, E and D is open to your discretion in that you can use it for any legal expenditure.
And I, if I may add, I just want to be clear. So the budget I presented tonight, $38,398, attempts to address the special education issue and the escalation of costs through a mechanism, right? The stabilization. It does not address the E and D issue. So the number I presented, which is really to Derek's point, this budget is a realistic budget, reflects actual costs and spending. And we certainly know the volatility of special education. There is a possibility that that $250,000 who was supported will go towards costs that we'll see in the coming year. So I, you know, the E and D conversation and the sustainability over time really isn't being addressed in this current budget. It would be under the proposed piece. The significance is that as you look at that number, though, 38, 3, 9, 8 becomes 38, 7, 7, 3, 4, 7, 4. Right? So the 2.61% increase becomes a 3.55% total increase if you back out that school choice money. That's all.
Derek?
Rick, I understand why you built the budget the way you did. And I get it. If you had your choice between proposals.
Well, I'm taking yours.
Why wouldn't he?
Me too.
More money. Why wouldn't he not take it?
Well, did you see that? I hope there was no delay and it wasn't said, wasn't said to be even humorous. The reality is clearly my plan in this budget is a short-term solution to address some deficiencies in special education. Derek's proposal provides some long-term sustainability for the district. So as superintendent of schools, hopefully for the long haul, that was why my answer was, not just the fact that it's more money, but it, but the intent was, please let me complete my answer. The answer is yes, I would support that piece, not with the intent to spend that $375,000 on additional staffing. I wouldn't go to that last slide and then start spending that money. The intent would be that we're trying to reestablish the E and D moving forward and do that. That would certainly have to be the intent. My concern is, do we have the support of the towns for the dollar amount? Right? I mean, that's what we don't know.
Go and ask for $250,000, which we don't spend any of the time. And then leaves us zero and then nothing in E and D that we're still, we know better off.
Sherry?
I like Derek's idea, too. First of all, the school choice money has always kind of bothered me a little. I see it as one-time money. I don't think we see it as one-time, but really, we're never too sure if we're going to fill those spots. We don't know whether people are going to stay for a year and leave after that. It's one-time money that I'd like to see taken out of the budget, as he says, the 375. As far as the sped stabilization fund, I'm really trying to embrace this because I voted for it. Honestly, I've learned my lesson. I didn't do enough homework before I voted for it, because I'm not embracing it anymore. Unlike Eugene, I remember when we had, in Lakeville, when we had special needs situations, financial situations, we went back to the town. We asked for an article. We explained it on town meeting floor. I like that better because I think then we have the town there in front of us.
We did that as well.
Okay. We have the town, the people there. And the people understand, more building means more kids, could mean more high-needs kids. So I like, to me, it's far more transparent than putting money in a stabilization fund and just going to two board of selection.
Who wants to speak?
And just, I agree with Derek's concept. I don't agree with the amount. Right? I think there's a number in between that, right? I don't think the full amount should be taken out of this. I think we need to come up with a strategy about how we use school choice funds. I don't think the right strategy is just to take it all out from the assessment sheet. So there's got to be a number in between that aspect of it. And I disagree in the visibility aspect of it because we have to go to the towns for the funding of this fund. Yes, we do. We have to go to the towns to be support, am I correct? The towns have to support the funding of the stabilization fund. So the visibility is there. So if we don't have the stabilization fund, we now have to have a special town meeting called, especially if we need funds, to do that. That costs more money that way. So I think it's fiscally irresponsible just by the nature and the volatility of the special ed funding.
Derek?
I respect what Steve said. I understand where he's coming from. Again, I will propose then what is the solution? Because I haven't heard one. On the flip side of that, the whole stabilization piece, like I said initially, the real way to fund it is through E and D. We just don't have any. So in what we're trying to do is say, let's not have E and D, let's create a stabilization fund. With no E and D, it's just, that's irresponsible. I'm going to ask the committee again, I'll ask the public, and I'm going to ask you, Rick and Fred. Do you have a proposed solution or mechanism to build back E and D?
This budget doesn't present that. It presents a.
Do you have an alternative solution to what I'm proposing?
Well, I mean, you've basically increased the operational assessment to both towns. So any mechanism that would increase that if we were supported. Let's be honest, if I thought that the towns would have supported an increase in our operational budget, I wouldn't have recommended the establishment of special education stabilization fund, really, right? It limits our ability to spend that money. I would have simply rolled $250,000 into our assessment. And if they supported that number, but I think we were all trying to, and are still trying to be transparent about showing that the need in special ed in that area, and this was one mechanism to do it. That wasn't me dancing around the answer, but the reality is you would take any money from stabilization and you would put it into the operational assessment. You're trying to do both in your proposed piece. I certainly could support that. I just, my concern would be, are the boards, the towns going to do that?
Yeah, Rick, you took the words right out of my mouth. Derek, I'm on board, 100%. I think, I think it's the only option at this point, right? But I sit here and I feel like I'm having PTSD from last year's town meeting. So I guess I'll throw it out there from, I'll throw it out there as a question. Are we going to get hit with rolling this plan out? We sitting at the table, we know why we're doing it. We know where that money inevitably is going to wind up and we know why we're doing it, right? Is it going to be thrown back in our faces on town floor that we're not being transparent? Given the fact we just found out that both town meetings are on the same night, knowing how much of a fight it was last year, right? Even, and I'm posing all these questions, I'm still 100% in support. I'm just, I just want, if we're going to do it, let's, we're going to have to get out there, we're going to have to educate people. And I just feel like the clock is ticking. to educate people, and, and I just feel like the clock is ticking. So, those are my, those are my concerns, and I just, I wanted to forward them to the committee, we can discuss them. But I am, I am 100% on board, Derek, and I thank you for, for doing your due diligence because it, it makes sense, and it makes sense for our kids, and it, and it makes sense to cover us. So, thank you.
Derek?
Yeah, to Rick's point and your point, Will, our job as school committee members is to put forth a responsible budget that, that has to be sustainable, that has to deliver a standard of excellence in our schools. And I think we've done our job to this point. We're at risk, we're at risk of continuing to do that with these, the budgets that we're putting forth. We're at risk. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but we're risking that standard of excellence that raised the bar, however you want to word it, that we've seen and that we've witnessed throughout this district. I'm not willing, because of a town meeting went sour, because, I'm not willing to risk that. I would hope that we were elected to stand our ground. I'm also not willing to say, to Rick's point, I understand the budget he built, but I'm not willing to say, because the town feels, listen, we've heard time and time again, the towns say, we don't know how to run a school district. We give you the money, that's your job. It's our job to ask for the money of what it takes to run the school district. That's what I'm asking for.
Yep. And, and just to respond, I mean, Derek, I agree with you wholeheartedly. And unfortunately, where we're at now, if the bar breaks, we're in trouble. Right? So, no, I'm all for it. I just want to throw it out there that if we're going to do this, which again, I am 100% in favor of, we need to get out there and we need to educate folks. And, and we're going to have to put the, the traveling show, snack dab, in everyone's faces, and we're going to have to educate people because it's going to be, we just need to know what we're up against. And it's going to be a very, very similar situation from last year. And I'm okay with that. But, but I just want to make people aware.
And if I, may I just, Carol, I'm, what superintendent wouldn't support, obviously, some additional increases?
Right.
My concern, though, is genuine, is, keep in mind, this board did task us with the parameters of 2.5% over the assessment. And one way we addressed that for the towns was to have additional funds through stabilization. If you recall, it was actually $500,000 that started out. So, I mean, those, if those parameters have shifted aggressively to, to provide some sustainability, that's kind of why the number is what it is tonight. It was kind of to, to navigate that, what the towns have been saying, which is going to be the real struggle. Right? Which is, where are we going to get the monies to support your school budget? That's where, and I have, I agree with you. I have no problem going to the board of selectmen, the finance in those two towns, but I think that's the message, that's the question we're going to be asked. Do they have the money? And if so, where's it coming from? Is it a one-time money?
Yeah. Just from a historical perspective, it hasn't been that long ago, I don't think. We had 1.1, 1.2 million dollars in E and, E and D. And I can remember distinctly the time when we said, we're going to take $400,000 out of this, a one-time dip into the fund, and we're not ever going to do it again. You know what? We've done it every year, every year since. And, and look, look where you've gone.
There's a figure behind you.
Look where you've gone.
Yeah, that's right.
And as, as far as pushback, you think, you think the town is going to be happy with 2.6? 2.6%? They're not going to be happy with that either. So, why don't we ask, why don't we ask for what we need? So, I'm on board with Derek, too.
Derek?
Yeah. So, I, I'm going to make a recommendation in a second. I just want to round back on one point, to Rick's point. The charge that you were given, Rick, you're absolutely right. And, and I respect what you put forth. I think it was a very responsible, challenging task to meet, and we did that intentionally. But what I, what is missing in that, Rick, is the 600,000 special ed money. If we ever included that back when we were, what would the assessment look like then? This is an incremental proposal to get to that point. So, it's, it's, in my opinion, yeah, I, I get what you're saying. We, we put the chains on you, and now we're saying, hey, let's, you know what, let's look at this. But I'm looking at it from the standpoint of sustainability strictly, and not operations, from sustainability and from, we used a substantial amount of money on special ed that was never made whole to this district. In the, so, the rest of that, I'm definitely okay with. It's really those two pieces for me that end up changing the, the, the whole paradigm that we, or the task that we challenged you with. Just, just to be clear, because you met the challenge. You met that challenge. So, I'm going to put forth a number, but I got to explain why I'm putting forth the number I am. I am prohibited from voting on sections of the budget. So, I've asked Fred to eliminate those numbers, and I'll ask the superintendent and Fred to tell you how that extrapolates into what I am proposing. I am proposing to vote on a number exclusive of salaries. So, it does not include its salaries of 23 million 270 dollars and 100, 270,174.
You just say that number one.
23 million 270,174. And, and I'll, I'll leave it over, it, it's, it's, what my proposal is, is what I, what I said in the beginning, from a revenue standpoint, of how, where I want the money, the revenue to be. But I'll let Fred and Rick tell you how that extrapolates into the overall number, because I, you know, I can't vote, I, I can't vote on the overall number.
So, I, so is everybody clear? I can, Carol, I can give that answer, or I can let the board speak?
No, why don't you give us that answer?
So, what, what Derek's referencing is, the total budget number would be compared to what you see up there, an additional $350,000. It would be 38, 7, 7, 3, 4, 7, 4. He has backed out those salary dollar amounts for the voting purpose of 15, 503, 300, coming to the total and the number that he gave of 23, 270, 174. So, it's breaking down. I just want to give that big, that big question of, which, in that, in that increase of 38, 7, 7, 3, 4, 7, 4, I referenced this earlier, is a 3.55% increase of the total spending.
I have to let the board know this. The fact is, we can always reduce our number at some point in time. If we chose to, we can increase it. So, I, I'm looking at a number that I think is a healthy number. There may be some wiggle room there, but you got to remember, we can't increase after this vote.
Steve, you had a...
Yeah. So, as I said, I, I understand your concept, and I think it's the right approach. I think what we disagree with is the number.
I agree.
Right? So, so my question to you, in your plan, after year two, we've recouped our costs that we spent on.
Correct.
Right?
Doesn't mean E and D's at a sufficient level yet.
That's right.
Uh, E and D will be, minus any outtakes that we have to do.
Well, let's say, let's assume it's zero, right?
Yep. Yep.
So, it, it, E and D, in my mind, at that point, still wouldn't be at a sufficient level for the district.
No.
So, for me, the long-term plan would get E and D at a sufficient level, and then a plan for, how do we use that school choice money after that, after that event?
Okay. As I said, I, I agree with the school choice concept. I don't agree with taking it all out. The, the whole reasoning for school choice was an additional revenue piece, and now we're saying we're not applying the revenue. So, I, I would be supportive of a lower number, and then I had originally said, flatline it to last year, and let the budget shake out. That's how we build up E and D. We don't just take a revenue source and apply it to E and D. So, that's, that's the part I'm struggling with.
Which you could still do, taking the actions taken tonight. You can always reduce the number.
I, I agree. I agree.
Just as a point of clarification, as you think about this, you need a 2/3s vote of the total of the committee. So, you, you need, you need a 2/3s vote of the committee's total.
For the budget.
For the budget.
Yeah, for the budget.
For both parts, actually. So, both the number broken out, as well as the...
Yeah, you're right. Does it make sense to vote, we have to vote on the stabilization fund?
It's an article, so if you're going to put it forward.
So, but we have to, did, did we vote to put it on the article?
Yes.
You vote, you took a vote to establish it.
We voted to establish it.
All right. So, in, in my proposal, that's still, that's still, that number's still there. So...
So, I...
Interesting. Both towns could choose not to, they ultimately make a determination on it, whether they accept articles, and they'll have action on that.
Right, right. And that should be our next step, is to actually have those discussions before we get to town meeting floor, just saying. But Steve, I have one issue with your concern about not dedicating the full school choice amount to this proposal. And I agree with you that initially, we said we'd do school choice after decades of saying, never, 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 because we needed offsets. However, I think, my personal feeling is that if we start playing with that number, indicating there might be some flexibility in how much we want to put in E and D or don't, it takes that control away from us because then it'll be a debatable point. I think if we're firm on, this is what we want to do, not giving them too much wiggle room, getting E and D up, say, three years. I don't think two years you're quite going to be there. You'd be going in the right direction, but maybe three years, getting E and D to a level that's reasonable. And then we go back to what you said before. You go back and you figure out how choice should be allocated. But I don't think that, I think you muddy the waters a little bit if you start saying, well, we'll just put this much over here and that much. That's all.
I'm on the other side. I think you muddied the waters by saying, we're going all in, and then tried to come up with a process.
Okay. Agree to disagree.
Especially from a fiscal component. You should come up with that fiscal before throwing it all in. But...
Um, and that's great. This is good debate. I'm willing to listen to all solutions. I think that's what we're here for. What I'm putting forth is probably the most aggressive of the solutions at this point.
Yeah.
And, because I want it on the table for discussion. So, if someone comes at the next meeting and says, hey, hey, Derek, Super Rick in the committee, I have another way that we can build back E and D, I'm all ears. I haven't seen it. And quite frankly, to your point, Steve, the reason why I disagree with not using E and D is a little different than Gene. I'm still out 600,000, haven't been made whole. So, I want to build that back, get that back as quick as I can. And, and let me give you this example. This is not a great example, but when the assessment issue came up between the towns a few years ago, we made it whole, and we did it as quick as we could in the agreement we could. We took it out of E and D. I want to be the same way. I'm on the other side of the fence right now. I want to be whole as quick as possible.
Anyone else?
I think we beat this out. I'm just a little confused now. So, your proposal is to take the 375 of the school choice out and leave the 250 in the stabilization fund?
Yep. That's what that number represents.
So, if the superintendent says that both towns have to vote on the stabilization, if they were to vote, no? That 250 is just gone?
Well, they would have to vote, they would have to vote to also, so if they took that action, the question then would be, are they also reducing the assessment by that amount? Which, let's make the assumption they would be reducing the assessment.
Yeah.
Right? If they simply took the action that we don't support the stabilization fund for 250,000, it's already in the operational assessment. I would think it would be the intent to reduce it by that dollar amount.
Well?
So, let me tell you what that means in dollar figures, and correct me if I'm wrong. If they decided to reduce that budget by amount, that's still 125,000 over what you have on your slide here, Rick?
Yes.
So, so we're still 125,000 more, and at least...
More than what's, more than what's up there right there.
More than what's in there, and at least that is a beginning of building E and D. I'm not saying that's, but what I'm saying is, for me, that's the part that's negotiable. The part that's not negotiable is E and D. I need to stop building that back. We need to stop building that back.
Is this a follow-up question? Okay, go ahead.
As far as the stabilization, I agree with you as far as the stabilization. I just wrap my head around, if I had a board of selectmen hat on right now, I would think, why do I need to manage some money for the school committee? There are voted people there. Why, why would I want to do that as a board of selectmen? I've got all those other departments to, to deal with. The...
That's a great question.
The school committee, here's their money. You know what you're going to do with it. So, I, I, I could see where, if I were a board of selectmen, I'd say, I don't want a stabilization fund. Why should I, why should I do that?
That's a good point.
I mean, it goes back to me, to the point, if it's part of the assessment, why do I isolate it out? Just put it in the budget, and it's part of the assessment. If I can pay a 5.2% increase or a 4% increase, where does it matter where it sits?
Right, right.
It doesn't. Not to me.
Agreed.
And for the school district, the best position, correct me if I'm wrong, of where that money would sit, is in a position where it could get closed out to E and D.
Yeah.
Well, in addition to that, under the stabilization fund, when you go to spend the money, you need approval of both boards.
Yep.
Right.
Well, true.
So, let's just hypothetical this vote passes. As a committee, is it too much to ask for the next meeting from our leadership team, kind of an action plan as far as how we are going to sell this? Does that make sense?
Well, that was kind of where I was going.
Well, I mean, the first, the first step, quite candidly, would be you'd, you'd adjust, you'd update your assessment. Right? You'd, you'd update that to reflect the offset of the revenue. If stabilization's going to be included, you would communicate that out and probably set up a, you're right, and then more aggressively...
So, right. I think we're going to have to sit down with both boards, obviously. Right? But I think we need to get out there and educate the people. So, I, I think very similar to what we had to do with the technology years ago, where we kind of had that, that traveling, not to have more long nights for you folks. That's the last thing I want to do. But I, I just think we need to get out there and, and educate people as far as where we're at, where our mindset is, and where we're going. So, I would like to see kind of an action plan on how we're, how we're going to do that. And that's not just the leadership team. I think that falls on us as well. So...
Yeah. When, when you say, take it out there and take it on the road like we did last year, I have to say, I don't think that was very effective last year. I don't think we got that much out of that. And I think you have to look at it and find a different way to do it, rather than to repeat what we did last year, because I just don't think it was that, that successful an effort.
I'm open, I'm open to hear everything.
At the end of the day, from a communications perspective, we got to do our best to, to communicate that on town floor. And we got to do our best to communicate it through the media we have right now. At the end of the day, it's up to the townspeople. They either agree that this is a responsible way to handle it, or they don't. What I would caution anyone that doesn't is, to Steve's point, what happens next year? What happens the year after? What happens, because I will promise you, we'll be going back to the taxpayers. I will promise you that.
Anybody else?
So, you, did you make a motion?
I think we've had some good discussion, and that's where I was going with it next. To this point, we don't have a motion. If somebody...
I made it.
You did.
You did.
I didn't have a second.
Second.
Could you just, could you repeat?
He did the...
Well, you have to remember my...
He did the 23.
Right.
Less the 15 in salaries.
So, my...
38, 7, 7, 3, 4, 7, 4.
Right.
Okay.
So, I think what you need to do, I, I think the right way to vote this is, we'd have to vote on two numbers. We'd have to vote on the number I proposed, and then I have to abstain from a vote on a second number that makes us the total budget.
Got it. So, I'll second your 23.
Hold on. Can we, can we discuss this?
Yes.
Please, before.
We have a motion in a second, so now we can discuss.
Yeah, we can.
Should, should that motion be coming from Derek?
The, the one he's put forward is fine.
Exclusive of salaries. It's okay.
Well, I understand where he's...
On, on the separate budget for him.
Yeah, right. Right. But not the second one.
Not the other.
Not, okay. Yep.
Derek has to abstain.
Correct.
I know where Will's going with it. If, if Derek makes the motion, we need a 2/3s vote for it to pass, and if, if Derek has to abstain.
But I think you got to take it in two separate sections. You have to take it in the budget that I proposed, and then you have to vote on the salary piece separate. I have to abstain from that salary piece, but I can participate in the, the non-salary piece. Fred, am I correct in that? That would be the way to handle it.
Yeah. I don't think you should make the motion on the part you can't participate in, though.
Right. No, no. I didn't make a motion on that.
Okay.
No, you were very clear not to.
Yeah, absolutely.
23,200...
23 million 271,74.
23 million, right. 270,123.
And I seconded that.
Okay. So, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? Steve?
I would, I don't, I'm going to say, I don't support this number. And I think this is a conversation, if we want to go back to building up E and D, is you have this conversation at, at the regional FinCom level. Even if they come back and disagree with it, we at least started that conversation and then come back to vote it. I don't think it's the right approach to vote on this number tonight. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Derek?
I don't think this committee should wait for the FinCom. They... They haven't had a meeting, we don't know if they're gonna have a meeting, they don't get quorums, and quite frankly, in the meetings I've been through, there has been very little discussion around the budget. It's been about particular items, so I don't think, it's our job, regardless of the FinCom, it's our job, and I get what Steve's point, and you folks know how critical I've been of FinCom, and I've been a member of FinCom. If we don't, to the superintendent's point, we gotta start acting, we gotta start putting things in motion. Again, we can't come down, we can't go up, we can come down. So, for anyone to, you know, say, wow, I don't wanna vote on this, because I just, I don't think that's a good move either.
I think we should call a vote.
So, call a portion.
The only thing I can say to that is, this is a public forum right here. We don't have anybody here, other than, thank you for our finance committee member from Lakeville for being here. We had an opportunity, the audience was interacting with us. I think we should vote.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second, hearing no other comments, I'm gonna call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Abstentions?
One opposed.
One opposed.
So, now we need a motion on the full number, the 38,773,474, is that correct, Fred?
That is correct.
That is correct, I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Abstentions?
Or state.
We're good?
Yeah, 'cause you're 6-1, 6-1-1.
Excellent, yeah.
Yeah, it passes, you get three fours.
Okay.
Well, that was painful.
It needed to be done, unfortunately.
I know.
Further discussion, or not?
Yes.
But we all need to set stuff up with the towns.
So, not that I wanna, Derek and I, superintendent for now, 15 years in the Commonwealth, first time I presented a budget that was, I'm very pleased with this piece, but just for clarification, 'cause I can make some adjustments to this, 'cause this is the document that will go out, for example, the shape behind you, slide behind you, I would adjust to reflect this new number for the public to see that, as part of our public conversation tonight, I can make those adjustments back up. This is still inclusive, the dollar amount that was presented is still inclusive of the 250 in stabilization.
That is correct.
Right, for clarification purposes, correct?
Yep.
And I would just request that you make that change to slide number 20 as well, when you...
Yes.
So that...
The volatility of the special education piece?
Yes.
Can make some adjustments.
Yes.
Derek? Yeah, there's multiple slides here that will reflect the numbers that were just voted on.
For the hundreds that are in attendance, and the thousands watching all over the world, please direct any questions or anything to superintendent, to the committee. It's important that we answer, be transparent in this process, so people understand. This is not something that's very easy to follow. It's a very, so, I'd encourage you, I encourage the public out there to bring forth the questions to the committee, by all means, good, bad, or indifferent, that's what we're here to do.
I totally get it, and I agree with that 100%, as an aspect of, you know, a town member, and understanding now, especially with special education, that you really need to do something. Doing nothing at all is only gonna bring you down more, or just gonna continuously have nothing, 'cause the cost just keep going up. So, I don't know, I think this was, I think it was a great decision. And I support and go out and help you pick it, or do whatever you have to, so you have to actually understand.
I'm just gonna say, get a sign.
Because nobody understands, that's the problem, nobody gets it. They all want the solution, but they don't wanna go out there and help either, you know what I mean? I don't...
Just for the committee to see, if you look at the slide behind you just for a moment, the number that you just voted on is a, just, you know, I think sometimes you'll get initial overreaction from individuals, if you look at the percentage increases, that 2.61 is now 3.55. So, it is in line with previous budgets, you know, for that, what I think might be an initial overreaction and increase.
Those numbers don't necessarily reflect that. Obviously, the percentage assessment goes up. Again, part of our criticism, the percentage of the locals continues to go up, is because the state's not doing their job with funding.
I was just gonna say, the state's support is not there, the costs are continuing to escalate, it falls on the towns to do this.
So, let me ask you, when you go to, so you have to go to the town, you ask first about the proposal, then you go to the town meeting, and then the town...
Well, ultimately, it's the town vote, it would, it's typically a strategy, to Will's point, that you would want the support of the finance board and the board of selectmen. It's not required, but we also experienced what that was like previous. Ultimately, it's the taxpayers, other than both towns that would respond to that.
If I could interrupt for one second, thank you very much for coming to the meetings and for participating, but for order purposes, I'm gonna need you to raise your hand, wait to be acknowledged, and then the first time you speak, just say your name and where you're from, the town you're from, just for those committee members, the people watching on the cameras that may not know who you are, okay?
I stated now, since I'm a technical...
That would be, that would be great, go ahead.
So, I am Heather Ashley, and I'm from the town of Greed Town.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, thank you for your interest, thank you for coming out, but just for order purposes, for sake of business, we just need to do it the, just make it the appropriate way, okay? Thank you.
Executive session.
Y'all set? Question?
Dan Schammer, Standard Times, just 'cause I need to hear it for the 36th time, take the 2019 operating budget proposal, add the 375,000 from the school choice program, and that is your new proposed budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You said that much faster than we all did.
That's exactly...
You got that from all of this? Pretty good.
That's correct.
He was paying attention.
And so, when I update those, if I may, chair, I will update those slides, and we'll also provide that to you electronically as well.
Those online, I mean, I'm not gonna probably not write this until like tomorrow.
Okay.
Perfect. Any other business that may probably come before the meeting?
One quick thing, another, thank you, Dr. Starkey, for always filling the committee in on donations that I receive, 'cause they are so helpful. So, this is to R.S. Tripp of the Lakeville Arts Council, who supported, the donation was in support of a museum of fine arts field trip that 60 upon a great high school students were able to attend. I just wanted to acknowledge it. She does let us know, and these things do happen.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Drew.
Okay, we have a few upcoming dates, oh, I'm sorry, Sherry?
We're supposed to talk about an article for our truck. Gonna miss that. For what?
Well, the...
A truck, on, tell me to put...
Yeah, if, so, at this point, we have two potential articles, separate articles, that we'd be requesting both towns, right? The stabilization and the other is the maintenance vehicle. I didn't hear any reservations to proceeding with that, so we...
So, you don't need a vote on that, is that what you're saying, that you intend to generate the warrant article presented?
No, I think probably, there probably should be some formal action in relation, but I didn't anticipate a vote tonight, but I would say, in light of the fact that you voted on everything else, I think a vote would certainly...
Make a motion to approve the 59,000, whatever it was, for the truck that Mr. Sousa has so strongly recommended and documented in very, very illustrative photos.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Pass this for me.
The dollar was 59,443.
I knew that.
Okay, perfect. We have a couple, oh, Steve, sorry.
So, I have a bunch of questions on the individual budget that we haven't really dived into, so how do you want to handle that?
Well, but it's almost nine o'clock, and we still have executive session.
How about...
Could we have a sidebar, or...
If, could you, would it be feasible for you to make a list of those questions?
Well, I could, but I think it's a, other members are, also have an opinion on these, what have you, so I do think it's something that should be part of the discussion, but you tell me how you wanna handle it.
Well, my thoughts were, if you, if you made a list of those, list of those questions, we provided answers to them, and that information be included in next packet for discussion then, or is, or are you thinking it needs to be done now?
I don't...
I don't know the nature of your question, so I apologize.
Yeah, I think it's, there's definitely a lot of questions in here, and some, yeah, can be posed and answered, but I think there are some that can be, you know, there are wish list items in here, for example, that, yeah, we'd love to, and love to get information to, if we did those, what else could be taken out type thing. So, these are some different budget items that we should be having an interaction with. You tell me, as I said, how you want to handle that.
Can I?
Go ahead.
So, I think that this was the first, a vote was the first thing we needed to do, set the bar on motion, but I think now, you know, we, the budget discussion continues all the way up, and so, I think that, you know, for me, I would, I'd like to hear those, and I think the next meeting would be appropriate, and that budget discussion needs to continue, though, I mean, by no means is this the end of the budget discussion, Steve.
Great to have them written out, so we can look at them and make sure those...
Yeah, yeah.
Would you be amenable to that?
But I didn't hear...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was whispering in her ear, so that's my bad. Is there any way you could put them together in a list, so that we could ponder them in advance of the next meeting? Or is that, is it too complex?
Sure.
Because you got a lot of sticky...
Is that something that you could, you feel like you could do, or no?
That's fine, that's fine, but I think it's, I'm more of a, that this, the conversation needs to happen at this meeting level, right? But I don't wanna have happenish questions, hopefully, it should be a discussion through this whole thing, 'cause...
But it might be helpful to see your advance.
Quite frankly, I think everyone should have gone through this book, and have some similar questions, I'm hopeful, but...
I have some questions, too. A few.
What I'm thinking of, maybe Jean and I can work together with, with Rick and Fred, try to minimize the agenda, next agenda.
Okay.
I mean, we don't get the reports at the next, you know, maybe...
We don't have presentations.
We don't have presentations, yeah, so we can...
We, you know, the class size, transportation's pretty much done, statement of interest, those sorts of things, and we just limit it to budget, budget questions, this is, this is the time, we gotta work through it, so let's do it.
Yeah.
Okay, but yeah, if you, if you could, because, only because, I mean, that, it lessens repetitive questions and whatnot, and that way, we know what you're thinking ahead of time, and...
That would be very helpful.
Research purposes, Bob?
Yeah, I mean, if you have questions on individual line items, that budget was put together by administrative team, all the principals and so on, and the superintendent, why don't you take some of those questions to the superintendent and Fred?